Bernie, what's with the beard? Who is that? I only know it's you because their name is on there. I seriously looked up and I thought, who's that? Got somebody to do.
All many different things.
Hey, there he is.
Hey, guys.
Hi, Brian.
Hello.
How's it going?
Brian.
I have my new iPad up and running, so yay.
All right.
Can you guys hear me?
I got you. I can hear you.
Yes, Gary, I can hear you.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Well, everybody on the line, everybody's sat on. Go to Alicia's and your email Friday.
Yeah, if you'll put these on and then there's a microphone that's in these that you can use.
Okay, Rose, did you send me a link?
I wanted to pause it for the light.
Yeah.
Proclamations.
Yes, sir. These are copies. If you don't want to mess with the originals.
Okay, Rose, are we good? Are we good to go? Do we need everyone to mute their deals? What's the feedback? I'm getting feedback of re- Okay. I think that's better. Okay, we're meeting a come-to-order at 7:02 PM. Alicia? Alicia, would you take a roll call, please? I'm getting feedback on my computer here. Hold on there. Hold on there. Hold on, everyone.
Is it, it's, is it?
All right, Alicia's gonna take a roll call.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Councilmember Fennel? Here.
Here.
Sorry. Here. Councilmember Rennanbaum?
Here.
Councilmember Young? Councilmember Young?
Here.
Councilmember McCon? Councilmember McCon?
Here.
Okay, thank you. First item is a, okay, thanks, Gary. First item is approved City Council Regular and Workshop Meeting Minutes, April 14th and April 23rd of 2020. Do we have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from those meetings.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
Any other questions or discussion? Greg's. Greg's second. If there's not any other question or discussion, Alicia, will you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Contreras?
Yay.
Councilmember Fennel?
Epstein.
Councilmember Rennanbaum?
Yay.
Councilmember Young?
Yay.
Councilmember McCon?
Yay.
Forty zero.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Some of the feedback is from you.
Okay.
So when you're not talking, if you can mute.
Okay. Okay, first motion carries, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First item is, this is Peace Officer Week. We have a proclamation. I'd like to read, please. Whereas in every American community, law enforcement officers are committed to the preservation of life and property, risking their lives to protect us from all who would mock the law, providing protection, law and order, and serving a cause of justice. And whereas law enforcement officers, including members of the Willow Park Police Department, accept a profound responsibility and work to uphold our laws, safeguard our rights and freedoms, and serve on the front lines in the light against crime and terrorism. And whereas we honor the heroism of all our law enforcement officers, especially those who have given their lives so that others might live, asking God's blessings for the families and friends they left behind. And whereas by joint resolution approved October the 1st, 1962 as amended, Congress authorized and President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th of each year Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of the federal, state, and municipal officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty, further designating the calendar week in which May 15th falls Police Week and is directed that flags be flown at half-staff on Peace Officers Memorial Day under Public Law 103-322 as amended. And whereas across the nation, Police Week is observed with ceremonies, including the hanging of a blue bow or ribbon to honor law enforcement officers who have sacrificed their lives in the line of duty and to honor those who will strive to keep us safe. Now therefore, I Doyle Moss, Mayor of the City of Willow Park, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 13th, 2020 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. May 10th through the 16th of 2020 as Willow Park Police Week as ask the citizens of Willow Park and those with us today to join us as we honor the standing and fallen. Doyle Moss, Mayor of the City of Willow Park.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Our next proclamation is Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the officer of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the officer, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education, programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I Doyle Moss, Mayor of Willow Park, do recognize the week of May 3 through May 9, 2020 as Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Alicia Smith, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. They did this 12th day of May 2020.
Thank you, sir.
Alicia, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir. Pat is gonna read some comments that we got.
Okay, Mr. Chesser, you're up. Pat, you're up.
Can you hear me now? All right, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
There on the item that the plating of the Storage and Retail Edition in the city's ETJ, we've had 11 citizens who have opposed that plat. And I want to read you the names of the citizens who have opposed it. And it's Kenneth Houston Gentry, who resides at 124 Whitetail Drive. Brent Prater, no address specified. Jane McCarthy, 140 Whitetail Drive. Ryan Gentry, 124 Whitetail Drive. Amy Wooten, 169 Camouflage Circle. Robin Shiro, 185 Camouflage Circle. Stacy Israel, 105 Coal Track Drive. Wendy Hammond, 112 Coal Track Drive. Sarah Cronin, 100 Coal Track Drive. Kelsey Wilkins, 136 Whitetail Drive. And Scott Smith, 132 Camouflage Circle. And they have opposed the approval of that plat by our council.
Okay. Anything else, Alicia?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. First regular agenda item is Councilmember Gary McCon. Gary, we thank you for your time, your service, and the job you've done for the City Council these last couple of years. We got a plaque here, and I'm gonna virtually hand it to you.
Thanks, Mayor.
It's the City of Willow Park presented to Gary McCon, Councilmember Place Number Five, in appreciation for your dedicated service to the City Council 2018 and 2020. You'd like to say something?
I do, Mayor. I appreciate the privilege of serving in this capacity and thank all the voters who allowed me to do so. It's been an honor to work with the community and the council members. And I appreciate all the hard work the city staff has done to help me out. Appreciate Chief Lenore and Chief West. And I wish the city continued success in the future. And I encourage everyone to participate in our government, which is made possible by all of our veterans. I really appreciate it and enjoyed it and wish everybody success.
Thank you again. At this time, we're gonna administer the oath to, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you see me? Lindsey Bass right here. I asked Alicia if I could make public comment, but she did not say my name a minute ago.
Okay, did you?
Can we ask her? I was on the list. I emailed her twice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on a second, please. Do you want to read it, Lindsey? Do you want to make a statement?
I do, if you don't mind. I'm sorry to hold things up.
Okay.
I apologize, Lindsey. I just thought you had a question and I had forwarded it. But Lindsey did make the comment that it was advised to me that I needed to email you if I want to make a comment at tomorrow's City Council meeting regarding the preliminary and final plat approval on Bankhead Highway. I simply want to request they leave the trees bordering Hunter Glen's fence line. Will the developers be at the meeting? Thank you.
Yeah, so I was wanting to expand a little bit on the first person that spoke. 11 people had sent in letters. I promise you, there would have been 90 more. But we were instructed by the city that the city had no choice but to, other than their hands were tied. So I just want to let everybody and if the developers are in this meeting to know that would have been wildly a larger number had we known we had any more say-so. So at this point, I just want to really take this moment to explain why this is so important to our neighborhood. If the storage facilities do go in and we don't have any say-so over it, that's one thing. But the trees bordering our fence line are technically their property, so they could remove the trees. And I don't know what intentions are with it. But that's another huge concern to our community because it provides privacy. It helps to prevent windbreak during storms. It increases property value to the developers and to us. So, you know, I think it increases stimulus to our local economy, attracting more businesses and tourism. And I just don't know if I'm gonna have another opportunity to say, please leave the trees. So I don't know what their intentions are. Maybe they were planning to leave the trees bordering the fence line. I even printed, if y'all can see me, this is my backyard, y'all. Look at these beautiful trees. It can take four to five decades to grow these babies. So I just want to put out there one last-ditch effort that whatever happens tonight and the plat approval that everybody here and the developers know how much it would mean to them if they could leave the bordering trees to our fence line.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna administer the oath of office to Councilmember Place Three. Place Five, I'm sorry.
That was my fault, sir. Thank you. You raise your right hand and give a statement.
I, Nathan Crummell, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office, City of Willow Park, Councilmember Place Five, of the State of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve and protect and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States under this state. So, we got.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Nathan.
The mayor would like one with Nathan. All right, count three, guys. One, two.
I just thought I was reading crazy. All right, Nathan, take your seat there, young man. Thank you again for serving. Rose, are we ready to go? Okay. Item number three, to consider an act on a site plan for a classroom building at Trinity Christian Academy on Lot, on Lot IR-1, IR-2, 2, Block 1, Trinity Church Properties Edition located at 4954 East Interstate 20 Service Road. Betty, I'm assuming you're up on this.
I'm here. Thank you, Mayor. You can see on your screen that we do have a site, an aerial site plan for this property. It is located at 4954 East Interstate Highway 20 Service Road. The property is presently zoned, planned development, Trinity Christian. It is located on the south side of Interstate 20, and the development of the property is to add a 4,480 square foot classroom building to the property. It'll be located to the east of the secondary school building and adjacent to it. You can see it, kind of the area would be to the right of the secondary building. The building will be located on 14 existing parking spaces, but there are a total of 408 parking spaces on the property. The school and the church have a joint parking and access agreement, so there will not be a parking space deficiency by eliminating the 14 spaces for the building. The classroom building will connect to existing city water and sanitary sewer service already on the site. All of the drives and entrances are provided on the property, and there will be no additional landscaping or stormwater drainage improvements required on the property. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission do recommend approval of the site plan as presented. I believe we have Shannon Knave with Baird Hampton &amp; Brown, the engineering firm, representing Trinity Christian. And we also have Mike Skaggs with the school present. If you have any questions of them or if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Betty. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, this, Greg, is this a permanent building that's gonna be there? Is this a temporary for a number of years and then it's gonna be replaced?
Um, I think probably Mike could answer that question for you. It is set up on a permanent foundation for right now.
Mike, are you there?
I am. Sorry about that. I've done so many of these meetings. I should be quicker on the unmute button there. I apologize. Greg, to answer your question, yes, it is movable, but we are placing it. Actually, I'm joined tonight by one of our school board members, Bert Thompson, so Bert, feel free to chime in if you need to here. It will be placed in such a way that it can be moved. We anticipate leaving that in that spot for a number of years, though. So we're gonna do some landscaping around it and it's not gonna look like a crummy portable building. It's gonna be very pleasing. It's gonna be one of the first things that guests will see as they drive up to our campus. And so we want it to be done well. It's also very securely attached to the ground, to the parking lot. We're gonna have some piers set down that will make it stable and very, very functional for as many years as we need it there. But if we need to move it, yes, it could be moved. It's a modular building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike or Betty? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the site plan for Classroom Building at Trinity Christian Academy.
Do we have a second?
This is Leah. I second.
Okay, if there's not any other discussion or questions, Alicia, would you take a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel?
Aye.
Councilmember Rennanbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumm?
Aye.
Five to zero, sir.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number four, to consider an act on Preliminary Plat 1 and 2, Block 8, Box 4 Storage and Retail Edition being 3.224 acres, Eliza Oxer survey, abstract number 1032, extraterritorial jurisdiction, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Pat, I think this is, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I was asked to prepare a memo to describe the City Council's role in the plating process. And it's in your packet, that memo is. And in essence, the city has, plat has to be approved by the city's plating authority. Our ordinance has designated Planning and Zoning Commission as the plating authority. We then have to approve as the City Council, we have to consider for approval, any plat that's approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so our role is only to determine whether or not our subdivision regulations have been met when that plat is filed. I've spoken with Betty Chu, who's our Planning and Zoning Commission Director, and she has determined, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, that all subdivision requirements have been met with this plat. So we have no discretion to deny a plat that meets the subdivision requirement. If you have any questions, I'll answer.
Thank you. Any questions for Pat?
Yes. So Pat, I know you can't necessarily give me the reason why, but it's just to state for the state of stating it. So the state requires it to come before us for approval. But we're giving no choice but to approve it. Correct?
No, you have, as long as it meets the subdivision requirements, you have no choice to approve it. But I think what you're asking is, do you have any control over what's there? We don't. Through the plating process, there are no building permits or zoning of the property that we're considering. This property is in our ETJ, so we don't have zoning over it, nor do we have any control over building permits. So in essence, we have no control over what goes on the property. So our sole role, and certainly with the plat, is just to approve the subdivision plat that's filed. So that's why I think, when you say we have no control or authority, it's because we don't have control over what buildings go.
Any other questions?
And whenever, because normally with the City Council, what comes before us, you know, we're elected to vote for things that are beneficial to our residents and to exercise their will. But we're also sworn in to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of our state. And it puts us in a really weird situation. The state really has told us, you have to approve this. We had to use our manpower, our staff, in order to make sure this plat was just right for I don't know who. But we have no financial benefit from it at all, from this, from this property. What would happen if we declined it? Just if, just while- Just if, 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 just wild hair, we decided no.
Well, you could be sued.
By the developer?
Correct.
But it would go through anyway.
Well, I mean, I, I guess Betty Chu would best answer this, if, if the plat meets all the subdivision requirements, we really wouldn't have any authority to deny it, so if you deny it, um, you'd have to have a basis for doing so to, to win any kind of lawsuit, so um, you know, I wouldn't recommend you deny it unless there's grounds for denying.
Okay.
Any other questions?
One question for Betty, can the trees be kept? Do you think that the developer would be willing to keep the trees?
I think the developer uh, is, should be on the meeting and I think they could address that. I know they were planning on doing some buffering along the residential subdivision, I'm not sure what, because we do not uh, obviously see the, the site plan.
Okay.
Yes, the uh, so this is great. Uh, this is great, we're the developers, we are here, so thank you Ms. Betty, um, and we can address that, so we certainly understand and appreciate the concerns of the trees. Um, we will do our best to keep the amount of trees that we can along that fence line, however, we also do have to meet some drainage requirements which have been approved, um, and those drainage requirements mean that we need to be able to kind of catch and funnel the water that drains from the subdivision onto the property, and, and part of that is us putting concrete, kind of flume, um, and our engineer can speak to it a little bit in a little more technical detail, um, but part of that is us being able to catch that drainage and be able to put, send it over to the detention pond, so we'll do our best to keep the, as many trees as possible, but we can't make any promises.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a motion, please?
Can I ask, oh sorry, I'm back, over here. Can I ask the developer, I'm probably not allowed to talk right now, sorry. Um, the trees that are marked with a pink.
Lindsay, Lindsay, you can't speak right now, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This is Greg, I'll make a motion to approve the uh, you know, I gotta find the original document here, I think I moved too far ahead in the files here. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, lot one, block two A, uh, box, uh, box four, storage and retail addition being three point four, two-two-four acres, Eliza Oxer survey abstract number ten thirty-one, Parker County, Texas, located in the ninety-six hundred block Bankhead Highway.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, Leah.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Alicia, will you take?
Doyle, I'd just like to make one point, and the authority that we have over this is to ensure that our engineer has reviewed the subdivision requirements and that the plat meets the minimum, the, what those subdivision requirements are, and I feel confident, having looked at Derek Turner's work, that this meets the requirements for a preliminary plat, and so therefore why I seconded the motion.
Thank you. If there's not any other questions, um, we have a motion and a second. Alicia, will you take a vote, please?
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel.
Nay.
Councilmember Rennanbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Crumm.
Motion carries four to one, thank you. Item number five, to consider an act on a final plat one and two, block A, box four, storage and retail addition being three point two-two-four acres, Eliza Oxer survey abstract number ten thirty-two, extraterritorial. We did the, item four was the preliminary plat, this is the final plat. Betty?
Thank you mayor, uh, this is a proposed two-lot subdivision located in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Uh, it does have single frontage on Bankhead Highway which serves as a minor arterial uh, within the ci- both the city of Willow Park, the city of Toledo, and on to the west, um. This will be a single entrance subdivision lot, the proposed lot two uh, is a one point oh-five acre lot and the lot one, which is the lot to the north, is a two point one-seven-four acre lot. Uh, this developer does propose uh, to have, to service the property with both a private well and septic systems. Uh, there has been a stormwater drainage study that has been submitted and reviewed by the city's engineer. Uh, it, most of the water will be channeled off from the Hunter's Glen addition in the properties to the north, it flows from northwest to southeast, it will be intercepted in that drainage easement on the east side of the property uh, along lots one and two. Uh, the drainage study, as I said, has been reviewed and approved by the city's engineer. Uh, staff and Planning and Zoning Commission do recommend approval of the plat as it does meet the requirements of the city's subdivision ordinance. Uh, as I said, the developer and his engineer here, uh, if you have any questions of them, or I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the plat.
Okay, any other, any questions on item number five? Do we have a motion for item number five, please?
This is Greg, I'll make a motion to approve final plat lot, uh, lot one and two, block A, box four, storage and retail addition uh, being three point two-two-four acres, Eliza Ave abstract ten, number ten thirty-one, Parker County, Texas, located in the ninety-six hundred block Bankhead Highway.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second. Pick one.
Seconded, uh, Eric seconded, okay, Eric is seconded. Any other questions or discussion?
Eric.
Alicia, would you take a vote, please?
Yes sir, Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel.
Nay.
Councilmember Rennanbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Crumm.
Aye.
Motion carries four to, motion carries four to one, thank you. Item number six, to consider an act on a final plat, lot one, two, and three, block two, Village at Willow Park addition being ten point one-three-five acres, J. Cole survey, abstract number two eighteen, city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Betty?
Thank you mayor, uh, this is phase two of the Village at Willow Park subdivision. This is a, the total acreage of this subdivision and the preliminary plat that was approved in twenty-eighteen is for a twenty-four point one-nine acre subdivision. Uh, there was also a planned development approved uh, for the entire subdivision. A final plat of phase one, which is the eastern, everything east of Willow Bend Drive, the townhomes and the commercial development was approved by city council in July of eighteen. The owner is, uh, and developer is the Morrison Group, and Westra Consultants are the engineers for phase two, this is the western part, and that is all commercial property. Uh, the final plat represents three commercial retail office lots, and it also includes the point-four acre Town Square Public Park area, which is a part of lot three. Uh, all of the lots are on the west side of Willow Bend Drive, as I said. Access to the subdivision will be off both Willow Bend Drive and Willow Crossing Drive to the north. Both of those are sixty-foot collector streets, and they are, they are currently uh, accessed and used in that means. There are mutual access, fire line, and utility easements that are being dedicated as part of this plat. Uh, the access easements will be constructed to city standards. The subdivision will be served by the city of Willow Park Utility System, there are existing eight-inch water mains in both Willow Crossing Drive and Willow Bend Drive, and those will be extended into phase two of the subdivision as well as fire hydrants that will be installed in accordance with ISO regulations for each of the development sites on that side. There's also an existing eight-inch sanitary sewer main, both of which are in Willow Crossing and Willow Bend Drives, and those will be extended into this phase of the subdivision to service it with sanitary sewer service. Uh, the developer will also install water taps and sewer taps to service each of the lots. Stormwater in phase two of the subdivision, it was approved with a part of the mass, uh, the original master stormwater drainage plan for this uh, development. The stormwater flows to the southwest corner of the subdivision or of this phase, and you can see a large kind of square rectangle, that will be the stormwater detention pond. Uh, with each phase of, of development of the west side or phase two of the subdivision, there will be stormwater drainage improvements made, and the stormwater will be directed to that detention area. Uh, the master drainage plan has been reviewed and approved by the city's engineer, um. This plat comes forth with a favorable recommendation from both Planning and Zoning Commission and staff as it does meet the requirements of the city's subdivision ordinance uh, for a final plat. I would be happy to answer questions, I believe Mr. Jonathan Lilly, engineer for the project is also uh, here if you have any questions.
Any questions for Betty? Do we have a motion?
This is Greg, I'll make a motion to approve final plat of ten point one-four division, the Village at Willow Park phase two, the property located at South Willow Crossing Drive and Willow Bend Drive.
Do we have a second?
Eric seconds.
Eric seconded, I think. Any other questions for Betty? Alicia, will you take a vote, please?
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel.
Aye.
Councilmember Rennanbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Crumm.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you. Item number seven, to consider an act on a site plan for Thrive Behavior Learning Center and an office building on lot four R, IR, block A, Crown Point Edition, phase two, located in the one hundred block JD Tolls Drive. Betty, you're up.
Thanks mayor, uh, this property is zone commercial and is located in Planning Area Three. The property is north of the Texas Health uh, Hospital, and is, is kind of in what we're kind of calling our uh, medical district, um. We also have the Willow Park Rehabilitation Center and Clearfork Assisted Living Center located in the area, as well as the property immediately to the west is the future site of Veranda Village Assisted Living and Rehab. Uh, this is a one point four-three acre lot, and it will be developed with a forty-five hundred square foot behavioral learning center, which is the larger building on the side, and then there is a proposed three thousand two hundred square foot office building that is proposed just to the north. Uh, the lot will be accessed from JD Tolls Drive, which is a sixty-foot collector street, and will be accessed via a shared drive with the Veranda Village to the west. Uh, that site plan has already been approved. Uh, there is also a twenty-four foot access easement along the southern portion of the property, which goes back to Crown Point Boulevard, and that is another means of access for the property. There's a twenty-four foot fire line proposed around the buildings, and it will provide emergency access to all the buildings on the property, as well as it's also shared with the Veranda Village property. Required parking spaces will be provided on the site, there are a total of thirty-nine parking spaces and four handicap spaces, uh, which do meet the requirements of the city's zoning ordinance. The buildings will connect to both water and sewer, there's an existing eight-inch water and eight-inch sanitary sewer mains, uh, so the properties will be serviced with city water, fire hydrants will be installed in accordance with ISO regulation. Um, the stormwater drainage study for this property has been reviewed by the city's engineer and approved, and the landscape plan meets the requirements of the city's zoning ordinance for that. Uh, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the site development plan as presented. I believe Mr. Chuck Stark is on, on the meeting, if you have any questions, he is the engineer uh, for the project, and I would be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you Betty, any questions for Betty? Do we have a motion?
I move, Amy, I move that we approve site plan for Thrive Behavior Learning Center and an office building on lot four R one, our block A, Crown Point Edition, phase two, located in the one hundred block of JD Tolls Drive.
Do we have a second?
Eric seconds.
Thank you Eric. Any other questions or discussion? Alicia, would you take a vote, please?
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Fennel.
Aye.
Councilmember Rennanbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Crumm.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you. Item number eight, quarterly financial report presentation. Mr. Grimes.
Thank you Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, uh, Jake Weber is here to go through the financials. Keep in mind, this is for the period ending March thirty-one, so if you're trying to, you know, parse some tea leaves into uh, how, how the COVID nineteen uh, situation has impacted us, this is not really gonna paint that picture, this is for the months of uh, January, February, and March. Um, but when Jake's done with his report, uh, I've got some, some data that we just got last week that I'd like to share, kind of give you an idea of what we think's gonna happen, so Jake, uh, take it away.
Okay, thanks Brian. Like Brian said, this is really, year-to-date's gonna give us a six-month picture, so halfway through the year, and like you said, for the most part, you're not gonna have the impact of, of the COVID nineteen, so this is gonna give us a pretty normal year, and if you look at it, there's not too many things that are out of the ordinary on this. Um, just looking at that front page, you can see water's down for the year, and I'll, I'll, we'll go through and walk through that on some of the detailed pages. Just gonna point out on the water line, there's been some engineering costs recently, so you're seeing that seven hundred and fifty-one thousand is the engineering debt issuance cost and, and the cost of that property that was down, so uh, if we go to page two, I'm just gonna walk through a few of these things, I think, number one to look at is where are we at so far? And number two is, is potentially on some of these revenue items, will they be impacted here over the next several months? Obviously because of the pandemic going on, uh, you know, you can see M and L, we're already at ninety-eight percent, there's not gonna be any issue there, obviously, we should come pretty close to hitting a hundred percent on that. Um, as me and Brian have talked about, and I'm sure y'all have talked about with him, is the sales tax is really your biggest unknown. You know, through six months, we're good, we're fifty-three percent, but obviously that's the big one that I know he'll touch on, and that's the big unknown, is, is where is that gonna go over the next few months, and how much lower potentially could that come in at? Um, you, you know, your franchise fees, I don't see any issue there, we're at sixty percent for the year. Uh, that should come close to budget, there's no reason to expect that should be an issue. Uh, your development, you had such strong development early in the year, that you're already at a hundred and forty-nine percent of budget, so even if that is gonna slow down, you're still i- in a really good shape year-to-date. So even if that is going to slow down, you're still in a really good shape year to date. You know, one item that that we've, I don't know if we've hit on a lot before is that is your fines and forfeiture. So your court revenue. That's significantly lower than last year. And even from, it's been trending down the last couple of years. And I don't know. You know, how that's going to look these next few months as well, just because of, you know, the policy of people coming in the court and that type of thing. So that's something that that's lagging and something we'll certainly keep an eye on revenue wise, just to see where that's going to come in at. Like I said, overall, from a general fund perspective, we're in good shape. We're hitting all the, you know, the the metrics that we're wanting to hit. And I think, like I said, the sales tax is the big unknown on that. Year to date, your expenses and your general fund, again, nothing really out of the ordinary. You see your personnel, you're about fifty percent. The only thing I'll really point out that that you may have a question on is going to be on page five. Capital projects, reserve funds, there's an amount there for one thirty eight, six sixty five. That's the tornadoes irons. Those were done here recently. I think y'all had planned to maybe do those prior, but that's the money that was paid out for those. So that's just the one thing that kind of the anomaly that you might see on there. On the water fund, again, you're right on budget for that. You're at forty eight percent with your summer months coming up. So again, you can see, you know, you're a hundred and twenty thousand or so above last year on your user charges. Which obviously last year was a slower year with all the rain. So you're in good shape on your water fund, on your revenue, right on target there. Again, that's not something you'd expect to be significantly impacted by the the COVID virus and really probably people use more water being at home. On the expense side, the the main thing I wanted to point out on this is going to be on page eight. So you do see we're at a deficit for the year. And there's there's really a few reasons for that. One of them is on that, you see the water distribution, water production line. Those are basically your water improvements, the well workovers, new wells, this type of things. So those are some of those costs that really had been built into the prior year, but some of the work just hadn't been done more recently. So that's what that is. That was part of that one point five million dollar bond. And years ago, we had talked about spending that down. And and as of here a few weeks ago, that money has all been spent. So I think I made the final entry a couple of weeks ago. And then that debt issuance costs that's put in there from the fourth water line. So that's why you're showing a deficit. But I think for the year, it's going to come swing back. And again, a lot of those are some of those were just costs that have been budgeted from the prior year on the improvements. Again, wastewater, you're looking good, right on budget. User charges, you're right close to fifty percent. So no, no concerns there. And even on the expense side, there's really nothing that that's out of the ordinary there that would cause any concerns. On page eleven, the the one thing I guess I'll look at, this is when your cash balances. And this is something, Brian, that we had talked about, we'll keep an eye on is basically you look at your cash and your general operating account. You're at eight hundred and ninety thousand right now. Obviously, that's going to be drawn down as the year goes down because a lot of you, you know, most of your property taxes have been collected. That's the the one number we're going to have to look at, depending on what our sales tax comes in at as the year, as we get close to year end to see. Number one, do we need to pull anything out of reserves in that general fund? Or you have that that transfer from the water fund of three hundred and seventy five thousand? If you look at last year, September thirtieth, the the dollar amount in that general fund operating was about a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. So you see you have some cushion in there, you know, you budget to break even. But obviously, if we do end up coming down on the sales tax, a couple hundred thousand dollars, that could be something we'll need to address. And and certainly we'll keep an eye on that, where that goes. So that that's just one thing I want to point out that that that's a big unknown there. Like I said, I think water, wastewater, there shouldn't be any issues. The only other thing I'll point out on on the cash side is that solid waste account. That was drawn down for the drainage projects that we had talked about in some prior meetings. You had the three hundred thousand initial drainage fund from that prior bond. And then we had pulled some out of the solid waste to to finish those projects. Any questions on anything that we went through? Brian, did you want to elaborate a little more on on some of the things you had going forward?
Yeah, yeah. Good report, Jake. And guys, if y'all have any questions while this is going on, you know, feel free to just chime in whenever you can. Couple of things to look at for our sales tax. Obviously, we got April sales tax in and and that was strong. It was slightly off from last year, but last year was still a pretty good number. May, so last week, we got our May sales tax in. So your May sales tax is reflective of your March sales. And so you probably had about half the month of March, we were expecting some sort of impact on COVID nineteen on the sales tax number. We actually went up in in May by about five, six thousand dollars. So we actually improved a little bit in from May of nineteen to May of twenty. June is the number, June is kind of, that's going to be the telltale. We think that's going to be rock bottom as far as sales tax goes. We brought in eighty six thousand in June of twenty nineteen. You know, if you're looking anywhere from thirty to fifty percent loss of that, you know, that's in real dollars. That's roughly a, you know, thirty to forty thousand dollar loss in in actual dollars. So it's it's not, when you hear the percentages, I don't know if it's completely the doom and gloom. But hopefully, we we're going to hit bottom in June and then start to gradually increase in July. All that said, I think we we are we're prepared financially to handle any sort of negative impact that we're going to get from COVID nineteen. We kind of made that assessment a couple of weeks ago, Jake. And I still feel comfortable in that assessment. And I think I think you do as well, not in your head. So, you know, we still don't know what the total impact is going to be, nor do we know how long this is going to last. I know the economy is trying to open back up. If you were in town over the weekend, you can obviously see that some of the shops are doing well. I think the nail salons are going to do really well. Everybody here got their nails done over the weekend. I heard about it yesterday. So things are looking better. I know the mayor is optimistic and I'm optimistic. And I'm hopefully, we're coming, we're going to come out of this real soon. Jake, you got anything you want to add?
Hold on.
Alright, thanks, Jake. Anything else for? Any other questions for Jake or Brian?
Now, this Greg, do we have any resolution into the numbers on the sales tax? To understand what sustained us through this period? What businesses or what where that came from that helped us through this?
I don't have any quantifiable data other than I think your fast food restaurants help sustain you through this. I think Berkshire's, when we when we finally get a chance to analyze the numbers, I think Berkshire's is going to be one of those bellwethers through through this crisis. I think it's also important to note, we were, before this hit, we were about seventy thousand ahead of budget in in sales tax projections. And so we haven't lost anything in April and we haven't lost anything in May. So that that gives me a lot of confidence that we're going to be fine by the time September thirty rolls around. But to answer your question, Greg, I think your your local fast food restaurants is what's kind of keeping you in the game here.
Okay, thanks.
This is Eric. I have a question for Jake. Jake, what kind of numbers do we need in the next couple of months to get back to where we where we need to be? I mean, i- if if we have this slow progression up or some of our restaurants are at, you know, twenty, twenty five percent capacity levels? What what do we need that to look like in order to get back to where we need to be?
Well, it's hard to know right now because like Brian mentioned, we really haven't seen the impact yet. Because the most recent sales tax number we had, we got was was above last year. And so as of today, we're still on budget. It it's really going to be a matter of how big is the impact going to be over the next few months? And I really don't know. I don't know that number. And we guessed, you know, it's 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 going to come at fifty or sixty percent of of budget. But again, that's a guess. It, you know, I thought it was going to be a lot lower this most recent month. And so I I don't have a firm answer, I guess, what I'm saying right now, because I just don't know what the impact is going to be financially on the sales tax number. But I do think, like we had mentioned, I I think really that's going to be the only revenue item that you're going to see a big hit. That and maybe some of your court costs, obviously. But otherwise, most of your other revenue items, you you should be fine on. You know, in in terms of your property taxes and a lot of your development fees.
Thanks, Jake.
And I think Bernie can speak to this real quick, Mr. Mayor. Bernie, if you want to chime in, I think development wise, impact fee wise, I think we're going to probably easily exceed the budget. And maybe, maybe do even a little bit better with some of these projects coming in, coming in this fiscal year. That's going to help us as well.
Right. As far as construction is concerned, we really have not slowed down since this COVID nineteen thing took off. I mean, we've increased. I feel very confident we're going to be well above our numbers as far as in development permit fees, impact fees. So we're seeing quite the uptick in that, not only with the projected projects that we had coming online with the apartments with, you know, as far as the independent living. We're seeing very promising continual development and construction.
I believe that's all we got.
Did you hear me, Brian, on that one?
Yeah.
Loud and clear, Bernie.
Any other questions for Brian or Jake? Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine. Discuss playground project update and possible need for additional funding. Mr. Grimes.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. We want to have a discussion to let you know where we are as far as in the progress of the Cross Timbered Park. Myself and Mayor Pro Tim Lee Young will join in and have a discussion with you guys. Prior to shutdown that we had with the government, we were ninety percent complete with our construction plans and also with our cost estimate. And prior to doing or before, we had to shut down for COVID nineteen, we were discussing with Pacheco and Co. Some of our options, once we got cost estimates in with our playground equipment, like service material, et cetera, et cetera. And they kind of came in a little bit above budget to what we were anticipating. So we basically put that on hold until we could reconvene. And when I say put it on hold, we had, we just said, look, we're going to go ahead and have a discussion with our Pacheco and Co. To see if we couldn't find any other way of do some creative. If you want to call it cost estimates or or find out since, you know, if since this low in construction or low, we were thinking maybe possibly low in construction, that there will be a better price for us far as contractors bidding on the job. And that's not necessarily the case. As I mentioned before, construction is continually go to go on the upswing. So next meeting, which I believe is going to be the twenty sixth, we'll have Pacheco and Co. Come to us or forge a presentation to show you exactly. Because initially, we had budgeted right around five hundred thousand dollars for this playground was what we were looking at. And there are some items that came up, obviously, cost of playground equipment, cost of construction for your site development, et cetera. So we want them to share with you guys, here's what you're going to get for half a million dollars. And then possibly discuss the options of increasing that budget or entertaining, can we increase that budget? To have more people bid on on the job, because you'll have more contractors bidding on somewhere around maybe seven hundred to nine hundred thousand dollar job. In lieu of a half a million. So that's kind of going to be the discussion or that will be the topic of discussion next meeting. So, you know, Mayor Pro Tim Young, would you like to add anything to that?
No, actually, I think you covered everything. And that I think that the big thing that we heard from the contractor was you're not going to get really competitive bids at a lower price. And so you may want to consider doing what you want to do, what's in your original plan, if possible. And so that was where we said we need to take it back and discuss it with the council to decide whether it's better to to stick with the original budget. Get a little bit less, have it cost more for what we're doing, or potentially expand the budget. So lots of different things we need to look at. I just wanted everybody to kind of have the heads up. So as we potentially look at what we want to do in our next meeting, you've kind of already heard why we have not started breaking ground there. And that that's why we haven't gone out to bid is we're looking at some different options for making sure it's a great playground. That's what we want to do. We want a quality project product that that meets the needs of the citizens. So that's it for me.
How quickly, Lee, are you wanting to get this approval? You know, for us to either up your budget or keep it the same? What do you want to see?
Well, and what we've talked about is if we are going to have a second meeting in April, let's look at what the ways of increasing funding would be. I don't know that we're going to get any outside funding at this point, donations and such. So but I I was hoping that we could have that discussion at the next meeting. So that we could actually get it off the ground sometime in the summer. So.
Yeah, the the general consensus that we had both with what with Pacheco and Co. was, you know, we we initially, prior to us obviously, starting the drawings, that five hundred thousand was a good starting point. Because we were looking to do it in phases, phase one, phase two and phase three as money became available. It's just whenever we came in and just went with the bare minimum, we saw an increase in price due to the current market. I mean, that's that's just the where we're at right now. And so we're going to come back and tell you, here's what five hundred thousand dollars will get you. And then if we do some other different steps, possibly it'll get you some more, you know, examples, shade structure, restrooms, stuff like that. So we'll we'll have more in depth. The 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 impetus behind this meeting is to let you know we are going to come back and and possibly ask for some more money to get some other things. So we wanted to have that in front of you so we can look at having a hard conversation. Do we want to issue debt this next meeting?
And I and we'll look at that cost estimate next time and show how it's broken down. I think I want to emphasize what we're seeing as a huge part of this is site prep, utilities. Getting it, making it a good area to put playground equipment on. It's not five hundred thousand dollars of playground equipment because we just can't stick that out there on the dirt that's there. So there's a lot more that goes into it that makes it a larger project that that that's where we've got to look at. And that's kind of where we can't really cut costs. We have to do the site prep and utilities. So but we'll look at all those costs next time. But just wanted y'all to have that heads up of, that's why we haven't gone out for bid.
And site, just a water drainage, concrete, stuff like that. So it's the 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 foundation and the bones of it. So.
Okay, thanks, Bernie. Thanks, Leah. Item number ten, to consider an act on authorizing city participation in the East Parker County Chamber of Commerce Foundation COVID nineteen Business Relief Program. Mr. Grimes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We got an email a couple of weeks ago from the East Parker County Chamber of Commerce. The their foundation is going to provide funding in the area of disaster relief. Because of the COVID nineteen, I think they're going to provide grants to businesses in the amount of five hundred dollars. I'm visiting with Sean Callaway and Lisa Flowers. You know, I think this would be beneficial to the community. I had Pat draw up a three eighty agreement to to provide the funds. We put five thousand dollars out there as just a discussion point. You can keep it, lower it, increase it, whatever you want to do. That's council's pleasure. Or you don't even have to do anything. But we think that this would be a good way, we can earmark these funds to go directly to Willow Park businesses. So I think that would be a caveat we'd want to put on there. But I think this would be a good way for us to to help our business community and some of those folks that are hurting because of this.
Brian, you were saying on that, and this, this is Leah, um, that we can earmark in the resolution, um, specifically that our, what our contribution goes to Willow Park?
Yes, yes, we, we can direct Sean and Lisa to direct to, to put our funds towards Willow Park businesses.
Okay. And these, are these business only businesses who are members of the chamber?
I think, I think all businesses would be open to it, um, but I don't know if, I don't know how the chamber makes that decision.
They do not have to be a member of the chamber.
And one other question, are, how are the businesses going to be selected?
That, I, I do not know, um, I can, I can find out for you.
Well, like we were saying earlier in the, uh, uh, update from Jake, is that we do have some businesses that are doing well during this time, so we have others that are struggling. Just want to make sure that they do get the, 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 the money that they do need.
Eric, the, uh, the application form indicates they have to basically say they did not get any care or other federal assistance, and that they've been negatively impacted by COVID nineteen, so. I think that's going to be the calling out process, though, for the, the larger federal assistance program.
That's your question, Eric?
Thanks Pat, appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
This is, uh, Councilman Crummel, I just wanted to check and see, um, if would there be a way that they will let us know the names of the recipient, doesn't necessarily have to be public information, but just so that we can guarantee, not just by word of mouth, but that the recipients are, uh, members of Willow Park.
So you're, so like an audit process?
Lisa, Lisa's on the line here, if we could ask, have any questions for Lisa.
Yeah, y'all can ask me anything you want, I'll be happy to answer it. Thank you.
Lisa, what assurances can this council have that the money, any potential funds to the foundation would go towards Willow Park businesses?
Okay, what, what we're doing right now is we have a pretty lengthy grant application that they would fill out, and they would be the first city, so, I mean, we could designate the fund, y'all donate to the foundation to go to the businesses in Willow Park, and they do not need to be a member of the And I, I will let the council know that we have already received five applications from Willow Park businesses.
Nathan, did he, did Lisa answer your question?
In a way, I guess, I just wanted to to make sure that we'll be, be notified of which businesses are recipients and how that will be done, whether it's, you know, press release or something through social media, just the way that they can confirm that these businesses are actual recipients and not just given by word of mouth.
Yeah, what we're planning on doing currently is, um, when we do a check presentation, we'll do it, um, on social media.
Part of this resolution, uh, council, we can make that designation, they'd be used for Willow Park funds, and in addition, they provide us the list of the recipients, so that way we'll kind of put that bow on it.
I think that's an excellent idea, Crummel. I think that's a good idea, Nathan.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, Pat, can we, can you amend that motion before we sign the resolution? I mean, we can, we can adopt it with that, with that caveat, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a motion, please? I don't hear Leah.
I can't hear Leah. Leah, unmute yourself. I did, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, this is Leah.
Thank you.
I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash oh three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Willow Park, Texas, approving participation in the East Parker County Chamber of Commerce Foundation Cares Program in the amount of five thousand dollars, with the stipulation that the money goes to businesses in Willow Park as amended by our attorney, Pat Chesser.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I second.
Alicia, will you take the votes, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember, yeah? Aye. Councilmember Crummel.
Aye.
They have to be hearing me.
Alicia, you're muted.
Oh.
We heard the votes, the motion carries five zero. Thank you, everyone, that'll be a big help to the business in Parker County. Okay, we're through with discussion items, anything else, Mr. Grimes?
We have a, uh, we're looking to have a council meeting on the twenty sixth, we got a couple of, uh, couple of items, uh, that Leah had brought up, for the parks discussion, we may have a couple of things, uh, to discuss as far as the wastewater treatment plant goes. That is the day after Memorial Day, so, uh, we'll, we'll get word out to you into this week or first part of next week is to, is to that meeting. But right now, we're still planning on having it.
What day is that, the twenty sixth?
Yes.
Okay, May, uh, May twenty sixth. Okay, I don't have anything else, I appreciate everyone on the call, be safe, and do we have a motion to adjourn? I think Greg made a motion, Leah, you want a second?
Second, Leah.
Lisa, Alicia, will you take a vote, please?
Aye.
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 Councilmember, yeah? Aye. Councilmember Crummel.
Aye.
Motion carries, everyone have a great week and thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.